Well, we'll get started. Good morning to everyone. Thank you so much for joining us for March's Town Hall. We couldn't be more excited to have everyone and I just, I love seeing all of the new faces. It's just wonderful. So I am Courtney. I am a chairperson of the Board of Directors here. If you have any questions for Expo, we will answer any questions that you might have. Go ahead and type those into the chat box and we'll be happy to answer any of those. If you'd like to during the presentation, you can type in questions for Mr. Hamster as well or for Expo and we'll be happy to address those also at the end of this presentation. So again, I'm Courtney Lull. I am Chairperson of the Board and I am also Vice President of Midwest Geothermal. But here with Expo, couldn't be more excited with all the fun things we have going on. The Training Committee is well underway, taking a look at our current training modules and reviewing some of the information that already exists within Expo. And then we do have the Standards Committee coming online very soon. Alan Scobie with GeoPro has agreed to chair that committee and I couldn't be more grateful for his involvement. We do expect to have research and marketing committees hopefully starting by early summer. So if anyone on this call would like to participate in any of those committees, please feel free to send an email to info@expo.org and we'd be happy to include you in those lists and pass your contact information along to those chairs. So Kevin McCray, who's on the line with us now, I've asked if he will moderate any of the questions. Kevin, do we have any questions in the chat box so far?
Not yet.
Wonderful. Well, as I said, we'll continue to monitor the chat function throughout the presentation. But without further ado, I am going to pass this along to Mr. Steve Hamstruth. He is here to talk about ASHRAE Technical Committee 6.8, which is just wonderful. I think it's great. We have all these wonderful sister organizations who are also looking at GEO and just doing some amazing work. So I'm excited to hear what Steve has to say about what's going on at ASHRAE. So I will let Steve share his screen and get started.
All right. Thank you, Courtney. Let's see here if I could just get that right screen. Here we go. Share. And hopefully you're seeing the title slide. You guys see that okay?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. And it's good to see so many old faces and friends and some new friends. Looking forward to get acquainted with and hopefully refresh some good business relationships. Some of you I haven't talked to for a long, long time. And with, with ASHRAE not happening in person now for a bit, it's, 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 yeah, I miss you all. I miss you all. So that said, let me see if I can figure out how to run this PowerPoint because there we go. So as always, you know, ASHRAE always has us do disclaimers for everything. It basically says, you know, don't take anything seriously that I say or do. But I'm, I'm here as an individual. I don't represent ASHRAE and/or ASHRAE's opinions. And also, hey, I do work for, for people that do GEO stuff and so I am, I am a little bit self-promoting with GEO because I think it's good technology. So ASHRAE's been around a while. That, that cover sheet on the right, late 1800s, when the Heating and Ventilating Engineers first started to meet. And then ASHRAE as an organization was formed the year that I was born, 1959. And when, when ASB merged with the Refrigerating Engineers. So a little bit longer history than Expo, but that's okay. And what's our scope? So really TC or Technical Committee 6.8 is looking at both Hot Rocks GEO, as we have called it in the industry, and, and the GEO that, that most of us on this call deal with on a daily basis. So, so this is really our scope statement and I highlighted the focus that I, that I like to hit on. Equipment and Systems, Collect Store and Utilize Fluids for the purpose of heating cooling and development of application of heat pump systems to heat recovery. Heat recovery is, is a significant part of what, what this TC also talks about. And I'm going to come bring that back later on and talk about opportunities that I see for us as an industry to be in the ground source heat pump industry. So we have several focus areas. The handbook, we've got a couple chapters that we're responsible for maintaining, updating, expanding. And I'll, I'll come back to that. So we, we push ASHRAE to fund research projects. And this is, this is an area where I think there's also opportunities for joint efforts. Certainly both Expo and ASHRAE has benefited from each of us doing our own research projects, programs. So the stuff that happens at the annual meetings or chapter meetings or virtual meetings. And then standards like ASHRAE 90.1, the Energy Efficiency Standards. That's really the, the basis of a lot of the energy codes here in the US and around the world. So first, up in the upper right there, you see the leather, the leather handbook. It's a big, it's a big journal and it's updated every four years. Our chapter, Chapter 35, which hits geothermal energy. I really want to focus on the left-hand side. The right-hand side is really all that hot rocks. You know, we're, we're going to pump water into the ground, make steam and, you know, turn electrical generating turbines, et cetera. But you can see on the left, we're focused on the ground source side system design and both water-based and refrigerant-based. I see one of my committee members, Craig Bouchard, on the call with us and he's an expert in that direct exchange area. Then open loop design and surface water design. The other chapter is in a different handbook and that has to deal more with the equipment side, systems and equipment. In general, Applied Heat Pump Systems, the different types of sources and sinks and industrial heat recovery, waste heat recovery. And I'm going to come back to this because I, I think these are also areas that offer some very significant opportunities for us in the ground source heat pump industry to, to, to transition or maybe do a little bit of a pivot and I'll share what, what I'm seeing in the marketplace. If you're an ASHRAE member, and Courtney and I have talked about that, well, you, you get discounted prices on books. So this is, this is probably the, the book on the left, Dr. Kavanaugh and Dr. Rafferty wrote some years back is really kind of the bible for a lot of the engineers involved with ground source heat pump design. And Steve Kavanaugh, even though he's retired, he's still very active in the industry. I think I just got a, a new newsletter from Steve in my email box today. So if any of you ever have an opportunity to subscribe to Steve's Outside the Loop Newsletter, which is a free online newsletters focused on our industry, Steve has some great kernels of, of information every, every time he publishes that. The ASHRAE Journal comes out every month and, and often we, we have ground source heat pump articles in there. I, I end up doing peer review several times a year on articles that have been written about our industry and it ends up getting published. So, so ASHRAE has done, I think, a reasonable job of keeping, keeping our industry, the ground source industry in front of, in front of the, the ASHRAE membership. Research, we're, we're working on several different things. One, one that I think is very interesting is we're, we're trying to get a research project going to revisit all of our flushing and purging velocities. And to confirm, okay, what's really, really, really enough and not too much. And I'm hoping that that one's going to get funded by ASHRAE and be able to share a lot of that information. We have, we have a current research project, which is a challenge. And we're trying to gather data on long-term temperature changes in, in ground source systems. And unfortunately in our industry, we, we've not done a good job of gathering data and preserving it for, on a long-term basis. I know a lot of the projects that I've done over decades, we would set up the building automation systems to track all the data, temperature into the ground, out of the ground, flow rates. And I'd come back and say, okay, let's look at the data and they said, oh, the hard drive died or oh, you wanted to keep that. It overrode every 30 days. So we, we, we need to do better about this. And, and other projects in the past, there was a big surface water heat transfer simulation that Dr. Spittler led. And was it, was it, was a good, it was a huge effort. Our virtual conference, unfortunately not our, our real conference and we haven't been in person now for a bit. But we just completed the ASHRAE Winter Meeting virtually. And you know, those of you that recall, it would have been in Chicago had it happened for real. But it did not. But in that, in that conference, I will say, our, our committee had a bunch of ground source related presentations. So these are, these are a handful of the technical papers that were presented. The long-term performance, hybrid systems with thermal storage, large diameter shallow depth heat exchangers was very interesting. PCM Phase Change Material Thermal Energy Storage. That's, that's a project that I'm currently working on with the Department of Energy. We've, we've been developing thermal batteries, if you will, that come alongside a ground source heat pump system and, and potentially allow us to, to do some interesting things with, with how we control and design the loop. Something that I'd really like to emphasize here is this, we're getting a ton of interest at the ASHRAE level on thermal districts. You've probably heard of micro grids and micro districts. Well, the idea of thermal districts where, where buildings are sharing BTUs across property lines. Some people, I'm part of a engineering group called Gray Edge Group. We call them thermal highways or ambient loop system. So these are water systems that typically operate annually from 45 degrees to 85 degrees Fahrenheit. And I think the, the huge opportunity for us in the ground source industry is we've identified our ground loops as an excellent supplement alongside these large district energy systems to take the swings out. So Garen Eubank, you know, one of our industry leaders that developed the in-situ borehole testing process that we all use for thermal diffusivity and thermal conductivity testing. He, working with Rick Clemensy and his wife, developed a new, a new testament that also quantifies the thermal storage capacity, which is a new, a new number that gives us as designers the ability to say, okay, is, is this a circumstance where this borehole might retain energy in a useful way or is the energy going to dissipate? Is it, is it, is it in bedrock and not much groundwater movement? So it's going to hang on to stuff? And we could leverage that? Or is it, is it a circumstance where there is high groundwater movement? And it gives us the ability to dissipate thermal energy rapidly? So news will be coming out soon on this. I'm very excited about the work that Garen and Rick have done. And I think it could be a very positive thing and also can potentially shorten the amount of time for a thermal conductivity test. But this idea of thermal districts, I'm, I think I'm talking with oh, half a dozen large municipalities in the US and in Canada that, that want to create a carbon-free thermal energy source in their, in their urban areas. And the idea of thermal districts is, is one that's at the top of the list. And related to that is wastewater energy recovery, where we tap the sanitary sewer, which is typically, you know, 65 to 75 degrees year-round in a lot of cases. And that could be a great supplement to our ground source and our, and our thermal district systems to, to give us another way to either reject heat or, or pull heat out. Interesting, King County in, which is Seattle, they, they recently passed ordinances, which opens up their sanitary system to people that want to, to pull energy out or put energy back and they monetized. So it, it creates for the wastewater authority a new revenue stream. It also allows us to apply our type of technology, heat pumps and ground loop if we want, if we need that thermal storage in a way that I think we're going to see more of our systems install. And, and I think that's, that's a great opportunity for us as an industry. The more people become comfortable with heat pumps and especially our, our version heat pumps that are not related to outside air temperatures and some of the challenges that happen at extreme outside air temperatures, I think it's better for all of us. AHR, of course, this event was always tied to the ASHRAE Winter Meeting. And it would have been at the McCormick Place again this year in Chicago. And you know, one of, one of my best memories, my father was a heating contractor here in West Michigan. When I was a teenager and dad was one of the first GEO contractors in the area, he did about 250 pump and dump systems, well-water systems. But I remember going to McCormick Place probably as a 13 or 14-year-old and just being blown away by the breadth and depth of our industry. All the equipment, the tools, the, it's just so much stuff, which really kindled my interest. And we would always, dad, every time it was in Chicago, all of our installers, our service people, our sheet metal guys, all of us had a day at McCormick Place, just looking at what, what the industry was doing. And I would encourage JEXPA members, you know, take advantage of that when you can. You can, you know, you sign up early, you can attend for free. You just got to get yourself there. It'll be in Vegas next year, we hope. And, and hopefully it will be a good time, but a great, I think there's a lot of pent-up demand for us to all get together in person again. And we've been seeing some pretty new, pretty exciting equipment innovations this past year for some of our heat pump folks. That's, that, that I think is, is really exciting. ASHRAE's new headquarters, just, just finishing up, they're hoping to get to their net zero energy status here this month when the solar PV is completed. Unfortunately, it does not have a ground loop, but it has all of the rest of our stuff. The, the last one had a ground loop. You may remember that ASHRAE did a study of the performance of the ground source heat pump system versus the, the air source variable refrigerant flow system that was in the other part of the old headquarters. And, and quite honestly, we cleaned their clock pretty good. Our stuff way outperformed the VRF. And this is using our water source heat pumps. If, if you ever click in on the website, you'll see a lot of the manufacturers that we all, we all know and love and use every day are in this building. Unfortunately, it's not, it's mostly, they're moving BTUs around and not using the earth as, as a, as a storage. Not sure why they didn't do that, but at least, hey, usually you can't see our borefield because they're underground anyway. But it, so if you visit the building, you'll see cool heat pumps like you do in most of our projects. So it's not, not all that. But why, why do I think there's opportunities for us? And why I'm excited that Courtney and the board reached out to ASHRAE and said, what can we do to, to strengthen relationship? And, and you know, I'm excited about having Expo liaisons attending ASHRAE TC meetings. And, and you know, if you're not an ASHRAE member, still stay in touch with us, but think about joining ASHRAE. Even, even to get access to the materials and a lot of the stuff that we have and rub shoulders with folks that are applying your technology. But yeah, I was one of the early certified CGDs way back in the day. I think I was the first one in Michigan. And we, we need this program to continue to grow and to continue to encourage design engineers, which in our industry, the design engineer is often the gatekeeper. You know, he or she can be the one that the owner says, I'm really interested in this ground source heat pump stuff. And their response can be, oh, it's too expensive. You don't have the budget for it. Or hey, we know how to do that and let's look at it and run the numbers. I've seen too many projects killed by engineers doing feasibility studies that have never done a ground source project in their lives. And they don't know what they're doing. And subsequently, we get a reputation as being overly expensive and complicated. And oh, I heard of one that the borefield overheated or the borefield froze and it, it broke. And we, we as an industry need to, need to get together. So our loop installers, our equipment manufacturers, our consulting engineers are all pulling in the same direction. And you know, a rising tide raises all ships. Let's, let's work together to try to make things better for our industry as a whole. And a lot of my career, you know, I probably, you know, might frustrate Courtney because Courtney puts loop in the ground. That's, that's how she makes a living. So I spent a lot of my time trying to get less loop in the ground. But the end goal, the end goal was to get more projects and hopefully more loop in the ground overall. And so by removing potential hurdles in the marketplace, which is the DOE-funded research project I've been working on now for the last two and a half years, that's been their whole focus. How can we reduce market hurdles to ground source heat pump systems? And make it easier to, to get them on more projects? Because as, as a society moving towards less carbon footprint and net zero energy buildings, it's really difficult to get there with technology that's not ground source. We are still hands down the most efficient option there is. We do need more research. And, and again, I think Expo and ASHRAE, when we, we start to pool resources, we tap the same research folks in the universities and, and so on, where there's times for us to get together and work together. I think that's fantastic, as well as case studies. There's a true need for people to say, this is what I did and this is what worked. And maybe this is what I would do next, different next time. But Courtney and I were speaking before the call started, you know, we have projects in West Michigan that have literally been running a couple of decades now. And it would be great for those clients to, to say, you know what, this has been really good. The, the maintenance level has been really low, comfort level is high, energy consumption is low. And we need to put more of those stories in, in front of the people that are making decisions. So the issue that I encounter all the time, and I was a principal of my own, my own firm in West Michigan for, for a quarter century, is risk adversity. So every year we would have our professional liability carriers come and do a lunch and learn for all our staff about how to avoid getting into trouble. And basically the bottom line was consistently, never do anything that you've not done before. Well, okay, if, if we're all trying to change the world, it does mean we're going to do different things. But we need to manage the risk. And the way you manage the risk is you talk to people that have done it before. I remember the very first GEO job that I did in my career, that was a big one, which was a high school. We hired an engineer out of New York to do a peer review that he had done several. So and his response was, yep, you got it right. Go ahead. There was not a whole lot of depth to it. But I think, and I've come alongside a lot of engineers and I know several of you on the call do the same thing. We, we try to freely share our experience, good and bad, show the blemishes too. And, and to tell people this, this works and this is technology that's, that's not hard to apply. And these are the important things that you need to know. Courtney and I were talking about load analysis and the importance for good loads as we do good design. So success stories as well as lessons learned, I think are, are important for all of us in the industry. And the more we talk, the more we, we take the time to write a case study or write a journal article or do a LinkedIn post like our friends at Dana Line do virtually every day. It just puts our technology in front of mind. And, and I think that's, that's, that's really important. So what about these barriers or are the opportunities? This perceived high first cost. A big part of it is ignorance or folks that are gatekeepers that maybe don't want to apply our technology because they perceive it as a risk to them. Or they want to do what they've always done. And, and I have worked with engineers that their entire careers, they did gas, gas heat, electric cool rooftops. And if you ever said, well, this job is a boiler-chiller VAV system, they would, you know, they would shut down. And it's not unlike that. And when we say heat pumps and, oh, I don't want those, those little silver boxes all over my building. I want big central station air handlers. Okay. Well, we can do GEO in a central station and make hot water, chill water to air handlers. And that's all good. But, and it's not necessarily the high cost. I've seen some projects where GEO got shot down early on and then they go VRF because that's going to save money. And I am amazed at how expensive the VRF solutions are. They're, they're often significantly higher than what could have been a great GEO option or great ground source option. So we need to be able to tell stories because people are hungry for this information. Well, you know, everybody wants to know how many dollars a square foot was the GEO system? And you know, that's, you know, I think part of, part of the success that we're seeing in the Northeast with Dana Line is they, they've got a methodology going to market and controlling costs and getting efficiencies that is allowing good market penetration. And we want technology that's, you know, repeatable and scalable. We all want to do more of this. So let's figure out how, how we can work together to make that happen. I've touched on the high risk and, and truthfully, the way to deal with risk is education. Have engineers like, like myself, I see Mr. DeBaradine's on the call with us today. Folks that have been around doing this for a long time, kind of been there, done that. We need to tell our story as much as we possibly can. We need to educate the, the generations of engineers and GEO designers that are, that are coming up through the ranks. So they, they understand the tools we use, what's important. What details, you know, do you really, really need to pay attention to, to, to ensure good success? Because things change, you know, we, we hang, we hang a lot on good load analysis. And, and there's a lot of folks out there that honestly don't know how to do an energy model. I, I work with engineers almost every week that say, well, I, okay, I use Train Trace 700 and I go up through the load design and I get my peak loads and that sizes my boiler and my chiller. But I don't know this, this energy plant thing and the modeling after, I don't know how to do that. And so we, we educate them on that. And then, and then they send me their load analysis. And I find out that this K-12 school is a three-shift operation. And there's 100% of the people in the lights on all the time. And when you say, really? Is it? Well, no. You mean I got to put in a schedule for people with lights? Well, yeah, that's, that's kind of important. So it's amazing how many engineers don't do that. But I see that changing. The marketplace is getting better. And, and I think that's helping. Complexity. Again, those of you that know Steve Kavanaugh, Dr. Kavanaugh, you know, his KISS approach. And Steve, Steve and one of my other colleagues, Don Penn, loves to do not huge borefields, but break them into smaller pieces, you know, and limit, limit your pipe size to say four inches on your mains. If you're doing a high school, maybe you do two, three, four, five classrooms on a, a single loop. And then you repeat all the way around the building. And that has been very successful in a lot of their applications. Where, where, where I like to have a little bit bigger loop is where we have more opportunities for energy recovery and, and moving energy around and having something that needs cooling year-round. And another thing that needs heating year-round. And so they help to balance each other out. But that complexity is, is, is something that we can address. You know, one of the companies that, that I work with, we do prepackaged pump systems with controls. So it's basically a whole GEO control package with variable volume pumping on a skid. All the controls are installed. It's all pre-wired, ready to go, shows up on the job site. You've got two borefield connections, two building connections and a power connection. And you can turn it on and run it. You don't have to have a building automation system. So for, for small to medium-sized project without, without a building automation system, that type of technology makes it a little easier because you might avoid, say, $3 or $4 a square foot for a building automation system. So there are ways that I think we can all work together to, to help get the complexity up. Carbon reduction is a huge, 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 huge deal. I'm currently in conversations with, with two clients that have between 5,000 and 10,000 facilities nationwide. And they have stated corporate goals of eliminating fossil fuel combustion at all of those facility, facilities in the next 15 to 20 years. And how are they going to do that? Well, they're going to do that with our technology or some other heat pump technology if they're in, you know, in, in the moderate climate zones and could do air source. But the whole momentum or wave behind carbon reduction, I think it's only going to accelerate with, with, with changes in the US, you know, in Washington DC, there's going to be renewed emphasis on carbon. And you know, whether or not we go to a carbon tax, talking to colleagues in Canada and they've, they've just rolled out a carbon, a carbon tax that is going to either triple or quadruple over the next four or five years, which is going to also accelerate GEO opportunities in Canada. And, and so I think it's going to happen here as well. It's already happening. We're seeing in different parts of the US, natural gas moratoriums. And I'm old enough to remember when we couldn't get natural gas in the seventies for projects. And it's happening again. And, and we see reactive legislature, people passing laws that say cities and counties cannot outlaw connecting to natural gas. But also interesting, I've had phone calls from national, natural gas companies that are, are looking at their future saying, we're not sure what we're going to be doing in 20 years. Is there a way for us to transition from, from selling fuel to transmitting or distributing BTUs? And absolutely, that's another play for our industry. And if instead of having high-pressure natural gas mains in the ground, we've got a community loop like that thermal highway that I mentioned earlier. And with multiple borefields, you know, feeding, feeding. And with multiple bore fields, you know, feeding, feeding BTUs in and out of that loop to keep it stable. That's coming. And the fact that we're seeing some fossil fuel industry folks looking down the road saying, well, to protect shareholder value, we're going to have to rethink what we're doing. And so I'm encouraged on it. I think that's, that's a, that's a very positive thing coming. Resiliency is, is another one that comes up in a lot of conversations that I have. As we look at the increase, the increasing number of significant weather events, be they hurricanes, be they heavy snowstorms, severe cold in Texas. Uh, the idea of placing a lot of your HVAC system underground where it can't be messed with. This is a really big deal. The military projects I've worked on, that's probably top of, top of mind when you talk to them. And, but as we get into other projects, it's becoming more and more common that people have a degree of comfort because they buried their stuff. And there, I think it's a great idea. Uh, and I think we need to emphasize that as we talk to people. It's, it's another benefit that, that we do. I remember this is, this is already a decade ago, one of the hurricanes that hit Florida uh, on the, on the east coast of Florida, on the Atlantic side. Um, there was one three story hotel that had Geo on, on the ocean there. And everybody else lost their cooling towers. Most of them were water, water source heat pumps with cooling towers and boilers. They lost their cooling towers. They were out of business. The Geo hotel was able to stay open and provide emergency shelter. Uh, and it was a big deal. And it's those kinds of stories. I think that was actually written up in Ash, in the Ashtray Journal at the time. Uh, those are stories we need, we need to share and repeat that this, this can be really beneficial in, in challenging times. Reliability, uh, I think one of the first commercial jobs I did was in the mid eighties in Grand Haven, Michigan. It's called the piano factory. And it literally was an old piano factory, uh, that was renovated into first floor retail and restaurants. And then the upper floors became condos. Uh, and we did a very interesting system, which was a, it was a modified pump and dump, which meant we, we, we pumped water in a circle. And as the water got too warm, we let water out and well water replaced it. And if the water got too cold, we let water out, well, water replaced it. But those, you know, I, I mammoth heat pumps were installed on that project in the, in the mid eighties. And if you go there, probably eighty percent of those heat pumps are still running. Uh, thirty-five plus years later. And I think the only significant maintenance issues that they've had through the years is that the well water there in Grand Haven, shallow wells, they get a little bit of sand in the system and they've had to replace pump and pillars at the main pumps, uh, once or twice in the thirty-five years. But other than that, stuff just keeps running. And I think that's a testament to our industry and the reliability. You know, we, in essence, we have factory sealed refrigeration systems, just like our refrigerators at home. And this is a huge benefit for our clients. Uh, and stuff generally just keeps running. So I think there's more, more opportunities than there are barriers. But I think we need to differentiate ourselves and identify where we bring value. And because too often we don't, we don't remember to tell that story. Net zero, another big deal. Um, again, many clients that I'm working with now, this is, this is part of their goal. They want, they want to get to, to net zero energy. So the group that I'm working with in Ohio, we do not only ground source stuff, but we do solar P V. And, and so we have two, two of our head, our two headquarters, both are thirty thousand square foot buildings, both are net zero energy buildings, both have ground source heat pumps and solar P V. Uh, and we, we generate more energy on site that we consume in the whole year and we don't consume any fossil fuel. And so this is more attainable than it ever was before. Uh, you could, you can get your house to net zero. You gotta work at it, but, but it's not just for the super rich anymore. There are incentives, their system costs are going down. And again, uh, you know, we've seen, uh, one of the significant heat pump manufacturers here in the U S. You know, they have a solar P V group. And so they have bundled projects, residential retrofit where you have one contract. It's an HVAC contractor comes in and loop field goes in and the Geo goes in and electrical contractor comes in, installs P V on the roof. And it's one, one contract, one point of contact and it's all coordinated, uh, and it's cost effective. And they have had fantastic success with that in, in the Midwest, you know, in their region because of great incentives in Illinois and other states. And I think there's opportunities for us to figure out, how do we, how do we add value to what we do? By teaming up with folks in different but related industries, especially the energy industry. So think about opportunities where we can, where we can work with the solar P V folks. I'm working with some interesting companies where it's a hybrid solar P V, where we integrate hydroponic or hydronic panels, rather, on the backside of the P V and circulate an antifreeze solution through it. And during the day, we can capture low grade thermal energy. And at night we can reject energy like a, like a cooling tower, but just no fan and no water. Just a little bit of circulating, uh, pump when the sun goes down and especially if it's cool at night. And there are opportunities that I see where we can marry these different technologies and get something that's even, even better. So future thermal districts. I think this one's a big one. Polymodal heat pumps is the new, this is the new, uh, uh, exciting phrase. And uh, we, we actually see some of the, some of the heat pump manufacturers using that to describe their equipment. But ideas that there's a heat pump, say, commercial level, six pipe systems that have a hot water loop, a chilled water loop and a bore field loop, all on one piece of equipment. And, and they're, uh, that, that pulls everything together. Uh, and it becomes much easier. Many of the big commercial systems I did early in my career, we, we were doing it all from scratch, using stuff that was never really intended to be a ground source application, but we, we made it work. And I think this opportunity for thermal districts is going to get even better. Where we have, we have folks that say, okay, the thermal district isn't going to be in my neighborhood. I own this parking lot. If I put a bore field under my parking lot, is there a way for me to monetize the energy flow in and out of that bore field? And, and generally the answer is yes, there is. And uh, as I mentioned, King County over by Seattle, they're, they're doing that now with the wastewater. We can use that same type of a model with bore fields and sell BTUs, if you will. So I think we need to be creative i- as an industry, uh, as, as to how, how we're going to do this. And, and uh, do we have, you know, energy as a service where, where in essence, we, we work with folks that want to finance the work that we do and we get paid over time. Uh, or we get paid a lot some, but, but there's a, there's a cash flow that continues after the job is done, which I get excited about that. It would be nice to have some, some residual income after these things are done. I mentioned packaged pump control systems for, for these midsize, you know, the, the, the thirty thousand to a hundred thousand square foot office building, school, senior living facility. Um, the fewer individual components that consulting engineers have to select and contractors have to feel the symbol and commission, I think, I think the better. I think this, this, this creates opportunities for us to reduce risk and per cost. Um, did a, some years ago, did a university project, a ground source project. It was a new lab building for the University of Finley in Ohio. And we, we had a, it was a radiant cooling, radiant heating project. We dedicated outside air and a lot of other acronyms that Ashtray folks throw around. But, but it had a central core, was a, a ground source heat pump making hot water and chilled water. And what was, what was really, really neat about that, uh, and, and got us the Ashtray Energy Award is we figured out how to leverage thermal storage in that application. And we, we did a hundred and thirty ton project with about sixty tons of installed capacity. Uh, and Ashtray recognized that and you know, that project is still working good and running well. Um, and you know, there's, there's opportunities for us to, to keep costs under control. And the neat part about that, that I was going to mention was that we had the entire mechanical room assembled offsite in the factory. So ISO nine thousand factory conditioned, not dealing with rain, snow, mud on a construction site. And it arrived, it arrived on five skids, uh, on, on two flatbed semi trucks. And we didn't have to wait for a mechanical room to be built. So we built it offsite. When the mechanical room was ready, it showed up, we slid it in, we hooked it up. The controls and electrical literally plugged together and the piping plugged together. And uh, uh, you know, within like three days after it's onsite, you flip the switch and it, and it's running. And that, that idea, construction schedules have been so compressed in so many projects these days. That can be another excuse not to do Geo. You know, we don't have time to bore, you know, to do the bore field. No, well, you start doing that right away when you do site work, don't wait. And we need to make sure we have answers for any, any objection. This idea, I mentioned Garen's, Garen and Rick's work on, uh, in, in situ testing, thermal storage capacity, that is going to open doors for us. I really believe this. It's something that many of us as designers of ground source heat pump systems have tried to, tried to identify and quantify. Um, did a, a military project some years ago, we had five bore fields serving a million square feet of military, uh, uh, facilities. And we would round rob and control it. So we would run these two bore fields and then shut one of them off and then, and then bring another bore field in. And what was interesting there was different bore fields. They're in the same general area, but they rebounded differently. You know, one, one might rebound temperature wise in twenty-four hours. Another one took more like seventy-two. So there's enough variance in the ground, uh, that, that, that we need to understand the physics better. And I appreciate the work of, of, of folks like Garen and Rick in the industry to, to help open those new doors for us. Integration. So I know in the past where we've talked about hybrid solar, but our hybrid Geo systems and, you know, wastewater that it, it, it diminishes the purity of our, of our industry. And, and okay, like, you know, I, I've had a lot of clients that said, I do not want to deal with a cooling tower. I don't want chemical treatment, I don't want water consumption. I don't want something else outside to get damaged in the hailstorm or whatever it is. And, and, and that's fine. But for other clients, uh, we designed a, a, a new police station in Conway, Texas some years ago. The police chief really, really, really wanted Geo, but didn't have it in the budget. But we were able to get him Geo. And now it was a, a bore field that we were able to reduce by eighty percent. Sorry, Courtney. But we got, at least we got the pipe in the ground and we had the tower. So in essence, we, at night, we would use a closed circuit cooling tower to cool down that bore field. And in the event of a hurricane, even without that tower, they could go about three days before the HVAC system started overheating. But it allowed him to get Geo performance at a conventional HVAC budget, which he said, Steve, that, that allows us to put three more officers on the beat. And, and so he put that into, into something, a, a real tangible benefit, uh, that helped his city council support it and, and, and it worked good. But I think we need to be, we need to be cognizant that if we open our eyes to parallel technologies, there may be ways for us to get more projects in the ground. And the more we work together, the more our market recognition is going to increase. And you know, there, therewith, we're all going to get more work. We're, we're going to make more heat pumps, we're going to sell more heat pumps, we're going to sell more sheet metal, you know, more pipe fittings, more insulation and more pipe in the ground. And so I think that's, you know, it's a win, win, win if we can, if we could do some of this. Working on, uh, thermal storage options and how we can leverage that as well. You know, can we have a slightly smaller bore field? Uh, because we use, we use thermal batteries to absorb some of the peak loads during the day or during the night, whenever they occurred and take those off the bore field. And then the bore field triple charges those thermal batteries and gets them ready for the next peak load. Uh, that's, that's where I've been working on, there's a lot of research been done on that. And I'm hoping that you're going to see some, some products in the marketplace here later this year or early next. Uh, and I talk really fast, so I'm on time, I'm under time and under budget. Uh, but I really appreciate, you know, Courtney reaching out and, and this opportunity to share with you a little bit about Ashtray. And again, my perspective on the industry, you, you can tell I'm still a Geo guy. I love the industry. I grew up in it as a kid. Dad, dad embraced it early on. And uh, I, I think there's huge opportunities as we move forward. Heat pump technology is where the world is going. Uh, probably fifteen years ago, I was in Germany to, to look at, I was visiting Beesman Boiler. And Beesman is known for high efficiency natural gas boilers. And while we were touring one of their production facilities, of course, I'm always looking around. And I noticed they were making heat pumps and they were ground source heat pumps. And I didn't know that Beesman had that. Well, they, and, and they, uh, it was a product that was not going to go outside of Europe. And later that day, we had an opportunity to meet Mr. Beesman, it's still a family owned business after I think a hundred and some years. And um, uh, I said, Mr. Beesman, I, I have to ask, I saw ground source heat pumps today. And, and he kind of looked at me and said, oh, you saw the heat pumps? And I said, yeah, yeah. What, what, what's the story with the heat pumps? He says, well, let me tell you something. Well, this is something you guys in the U S, you don't get this. He said, in our hundred year plan, well, that got my attention first. These guys have a hundred year plan. We, we barely have quarterly earnings, you know, reports and plans. But as a company, they're looking out at a hundred years. And he said, in a hundred years, we're not going to be burnt, excuse me, burning any fossil fuels other than maybe high temperature industrial applications or probably use hydrogen or something like that. He says, so in a hundred years, it's all going to be heat pumps and our heat pumps are going to rule the world. So, okay, that was pretty thoughtful. And that I've carried that observation with me throughout my career and I still think it's true. I think heat pumps are going to dominate the heating cooling world, domestic hot water world for decades to come. And our industry stands to, is very well positioned to help make that extremely positive transition over a period of time. So thank you. I've got a bunch of email addresses on there and I'm on LinkedIn. So if anybody ever wants to talk, let me know. And I'm happy to, happy to share. Back to you, Courtney.
Okay, Steve, this is Kevin. Uh, we do have, it never fails, the phone rings in the background right when you don't need it to. Give me a, a second for that to stop.
Well, I can start to kind of look at some of the questions and comments.
I, I can go ahead, Courtney.
Oh, perfect. Okay, great.
Yeah, finally, I think my wife picked it up. Thank you. Uh, I, there were a number of generous comments that people shared, but I wanted to focus on, uh, the, the questions that came through. And, and one is from Kevin Chisholm and he wants to know, how far north must the pipe in the ground be? I believe for a thermal district to be insulated.
Oh, we typically don't insulate.
Okay.
Uh, and we just, we stay below frost lines. Uh, and you know, you think about, think about a sanitary sewer system, you don't insulate them. And generally, excuse me, generally because we're, we're, we're doing this with often in an urban mix, there's often cooling loads year round. And, and we see places, you know, as far well, well into Canada that are doing these type of ambient loops or thermal highways. And they're, and they're often, they're typically never insulated.
Okay. Uh, kind of a follow-up question he had. Uh, do you find that some developers and designers are taking on the, the funding risks associated with these systems?
Yes. Uh, having conversations with a developer that's, that's looking at like a fifteen hundred resident complex, they would like to own the utility and, and in essence, charge a meter fee. You know, you have a three ton system, you're going to pay us fifty dollars a month to be connected to, to that. And that becomes another long-term revenue stream for the developer. So yes, there is more and more interest in that. Uh, I think we need to see more people share their model and how it worked or what didn't work. And, and as that becomes more well-known, we're going to see more of it. Yes.
Uh, another question, and then I'll try to get to the comments after we address the questions first. Uh, this one, uh, may be more of a, of a organizational question rather than a technology question. And the question is, can we get Ashtray to certify CGDs rather than A E E?
Well, certainly Ashtray has its own set of certifications. You know, for example, I'm an Ashtray high-performance building design professional. And, and for a lot of the social professional associations like Ashtray and A W E and others, it's, it's, it's a revenue stream, right? It's, it's, they also have to support the work of the society. Um, the C G D program with, with A W E i- is, is well established. I guess, you know, the mechanisms could be there certainly to do something like that. But I think as an industry, we, we would probably want to, want to work through that carefully. And that's, there's a lot of potential, uh, political landmines here. So I don't want to step on anybody's boat physically or conceptually. Could it be done? Sure. Ashtray, Ashtray could do that. And uh, that would be a possibility, but I think we'd have to identify the benefit. You know, it's one of those, if it ain't broke, go fix it. But if, if, if by teaming, say with Ashtray, the C G D program would have better penetration into the consulting. Have better penetration in the consulting engineer community. Then, then that's maybe something to talk about and, you know, why not?
Okay, um, these are probably going to seem a little bit random because they, I'm going to try to field the comments as they came in. Uh I believe it's the New York State ERDA is very interested in hearing more about thermal districts, I believe. So I'll just pass that along. Also understand that uh a map of highly efficient energy projects in North America can be found. At WWW dot eco dash DEA dot org. Bob Wyman shares in New York State. Uh when the electric and gas utilities are asking for rate increases, I believe. They've been successful in requiring that those utilities have to implement some geothermal district heating pilot projects as a part of their rate project. If you want to comment on that, Steve?
Good comments.
Okay, you have anything to add to it or?
Well, other, other than these, these folks are echoing a lot what we're seeing nationwide and, and actually internationally. Uh I've talked to people in, in Scotland and in the UK that are trying to do the same things that we're doing here. Uh and so there's, there is a lot of interest, so good, it's good.
I, I understand that uh Geo was actually a funding source for the uh Ashray building study and I believe uh. Uh Geo and Courtney are going to try to coordinate getting a link to that study for people uh to, to take a look at. Andrew Stumpf uh at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign uh says they're using fiber optic distributed temperature sensing systems. And if people want to learn more about that. They can contact him at A Stumpf, which is A S T U M P F at Illinois dot edu. Uh Mike says case studies that we can pull off the shelf to send to potential customers would be great. I, I have a comment or question to that. Is, is our case studies seen as proprietary by the companies that did the project and they are reluctant to share too much information? Or is there some other barriers to getting uh effective case studies?
Excellent question, the. There's a couple of different answers, some companies are very protective, I think that's short sighted, I think the more we share. I think it, it makes the company that shares the information the good and maybe the, you know, what they learned. It just elevates them as having, having experience, been there, done that. That said, you know, I've had clients that won't let us release information. Some of them, you know, the military, that's, that's an obvious one, but there, there are private sector clients that say, uh, we, we know. They may perceive this as a market advantage or something that they really don't want to share it. But then the next thing, I know that they have their competitor, they're touring their facility, so it's like, okay. So there are, it varies. And we just have to keep asking and pressing, honestly, so many in the design community are so busy. You know, the, the best day, day on a project is when you start it and then the, the day you cut the ribbon and you walk away, you know, and then start the next one. And so many unfortunately don't. Do an eleven month walkthrough after it's been open for a while and see what's going on and don't hear the stories and. Spend the time to capture the information and I think as an industry. We need to be a bit more marketing and business development focused to capture that information because it's just going to, again, help all of us expand, expand the industry.
Bob suggests that the industry should sponsor outcome oriented research and he uses as an example, what would it take to convert a hundred million homes or buildings in the United States? To geothermal before twenty fifty. And you know, include in there what are the new technology needs, procedural needs, new business models, electric grid enhancements, electric rate. Sure, there's many other things.
Yeah. And yeah, and I, Bob's been a great leader in the industry and I really appreciate that, that kind of thought leadership, thank you Bob.
Uh Kevin Austin uh shares that uh his company Ortman Drilling uh completed the first phase of uh, of projects at Ball State University twelve years ago. And that they still have contacts there that uh might be willing to help with uh getting the history of the. Borehole, the four thousand boreholes and the energy used to date, so uh something for uh not only Ashray but Expo to follow up on.
Yeah, yeah, I, well, I think, I think Brian Erlob was on the call, Brian, can't you give those guys a call, you must still know them down there?
We'll uh, we'll make sure that he heard that.
Yeah, yeah, I heard it.
Okay, good, thank you Brian. Uh again, Bob shares uh in New York City, uh there's a local law ninety seven that establishes substantial penalties for buildings. That uh don't dramatically reduce their greenhouse gas uh emissions. Do you see that anywhere else, Steve?
It's, it's starting to happen also in uh, in California, I think we have some friends here uh from California Geo here, Bill Martin's on, on the call. But I know, it seems like San Jose and others are. First, no new, no new natural gas connections and then I think several are trying to figure out how to incentivize. As, as opposed to penalize, but. Try to push that way, I, I don't have any specifics, so.
Okay. Uh Lance Mcnevin from the Plastics Pipe Institute uh shares that they have uh two case studies at their website. Uh so folks might want to take a look at those. I'm trying to go down through here and, and capture others. Barry recognizes that uh most of the big boiler guys in Europe are getting to the heat pump market or in already. Uh Bob says it'll be essential for the industry to offer third party ownership uh for at least the ground loops. Uh power purchase agreements and leases are, are what are allowed for solar and wind to grow as fast as, as it has. And until uh uh geothermal has TPOs, uh it's not going to grow as rapidly according to Bob. Uh Kerry shares that they don't insulate the, they do not insulate the ambient loop unless it is above uh uh frost depth. Which would be like horizontal systems, they control the minimum delivery temperature to minus fifty because of diversity and wasted energy recovery. Uh just sharing some things. A lot, a lot of compliments, Steve, I'm not going to stroke your ego too much by reading those out loud.
Please do not, thank you.
Uh I'm just teasing. There is a, a paper available on the use of fiber optic borehole temperature monitoring techniques, uh I don't see the full uh information there, I guess maybe it comes from uh. Our folks over in um, in Sweden perhaps, there is a link there, um, I'm sure um Expo will provide a way for everybody to access that. Uh down the road, it's too long of an address to read accurately on over the.
And there's Chuck Hammack here in the US has done a lot of work with the fiber optics on, on borehole thermal energy storage. Uh as well, so he's another resource for us here in the US.
Another question is, how do I find help with a model prototype uh for affordable housing SFH and surpasses net zero?
Well, that's, that's a good question, you know, I guess, you know, it, it. It depends a little bit on you, on your team, you know, is your design professional, are they, are they? Can, you know, are, are they familiar with the technologies? You know, is this, this is like a passive house type approach or? There's a lot of different answers and probably more variables so we can identify, but it's, it's, it's in essence to surround yourself with the, the right people. The challenge for us as an industry is to push the right people to the front, front of the pack. And so people know that there are resources that they can get to. Uh ideally, you know, some design professionals and, you know, local contractors, et cetera, would be able, be able to say, hey, you know, so and so has done this before. Uh and, and might be a resource for you, but I don't have a quick, a quick answer on that one.
Okay. Uh I believe uh other than uh a number of uh very generous comments to direct people to uh documents that are online uh or studies. Um I think that's it in terms of questions and, and comments. Uh I believe uh Expo will compile uh these referrals. And uh make them available to all the participants in today's call, with that Courtney, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great, um, I want to, thanks Steve very much for the presentation today, I couldn't be more excited about all the things that. Uh we talked about and yes, even though I want to drill all the boreholes everywhere, I will get to drill a lot more boreholes. If we have much better market penetration, so however I get to keep my rigs busy, uh that's fine. But I do agree that when we can start to really look at some of these technologies that we can blend together, we're all going to be more successful. Uh I will echo the call for case studies. There are a plethora of you on the call today who have been just pillars in this industry for a long period of time. And I would encourage you to reach out to especially some of those uh installations that were done early on and just check in, see how they're doing. I know I personally have done that with some of our buildings that we had done early on. Um in fact, one of them was a jail that I had heard that they absolutely hated it and couldn't stand their geosystem and that another jail wasn't going to go Geo. Because that original one hated it and it couldn't have been further from the truth when I talked to uh the supposed customer who hated their geosystem. Uh not only did he absolutely love his geosystem, in ten years, he was just starting to replace his first heat pump. Simply because he couldn't get a compressor. So it was just incredible and to get that kind of feedback and to be able to provide it on a national level is huge. So I would encourage anyone, if you have articles or case studies or any information available, send it over to us at info at expo.org. And we'll be happy to include it on our website and our newsletters coming up to get it out to membership. Um we as geothermal, we have an uphill battle because we're not the cool renewable, you can go point out to your friends. So unfortunately, we need to do a better job at marketing ourselves, which is including tuning our own horn, which is hard for some of us to do. But it will be what will drive us forward. It's the education that we need to really put out to the marketplace to really educate the market that. No, it is not always too expensive, there are other ways to skin that cat that we can absolutely give you Geo. And even looking at options where it's a reduced borefield and we put it a cooling tower, that's a great segue into maybe eventually they have to replace the parking lot. And we can put in another loop field for them to continue to take them off that conventional equipment, but there are so many different ways to do that. And I encourage people to reach out to other people in the industry and ask those questions. Uh I couldn't, couldn't be more excited. Um we do have our April presentation coming up, um it's going to be the last in our segments of all of our fun partner organizations. So CSA, we are going to learn all about the C four four eight from Jeff Hammond. Uh if anyone has any questions or any needs for Expo, please feel free to reach out to info at expo.org and we'll be happy to address those uh questions and concerns. But otherwise, thank you everyone for attending, I'm so excited to see how many people were in attendance today, some great faces. As Steve pointed out, old and new, just it's wonderful for everyone's participation and I look forward to seeing everyone next month, thank you again so much and have a wonderful day. Bye.